All right, I'm gonna call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting of August 17th. Misty, can we have roll call?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
She's running late, Misty.
Okay. Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, let's move on to City Council minutes of August 3rd, 2021. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council minutes from August 3rd, 2021.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Curler and second by Mrs. Quidnow. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's move for a roll call on that.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Fantastic, thank you. Let's move to correspondence. Ms. Curler, did you have any correspondence?
Uh, yes, I had one item of correspondence and an update on constituent contact that we had from our last meeting. So yesterday I got an email from a constituent on Mulberry Street who was concerned about drainage and the city's plans for repaving that area. I talked with Steve and Duane is already gonna be following up and looking into that this week. Um, also I just wanted to report, um, for those who weren't here after the meeting last week that I did volunteer to follow up on the driveway throat ordinance issue and kind of look into that. And so I called Pam Lozares from the Plan Commission just to give her a heads up that, you know, this wasn't issue that she might be hearing about. I met with the city manager, um, streets manager and attorney just to start to identify what are some of the root causes of the problem that was presented to us, try to evaluate some possible solutions. And then Attorney Drescher and I have a meeting with zoning administrator and planner in, I guess, about three weeks to talk further about it and whether an ordinance change might be appropriate or not. So I'll keep you all posted.
Thank you. I'll just keep that mic on all night, I think. But, Mr. Fields?
Um, I met with a couple of individuals who represented some of the UTV clubs that wanted to meet with some of the council members and just do education on what their, you know, what surrounding communities are doing. So they gave us some information on that. Um, also got the, copied with the email on the water issues on East Lake Street, I think we all did. And then I got an invite today from Lake Mills Chamber. They're having a meeting on the 19th. I'm not sure if they sent that out to everybody, but that's it for me.
All right, thank you. I also had the UTV and the, uh, the Lake Street issue as well. Ms. Quidnow?
I don't have anything other than what has already been discussed, but I wanna thank Ms. Curler for her work because I know that the constituent that came forward last meeting did reach out to me and I am glad to hear that things are in progress. So I'll let them know that you're on it.
All right, Mrs. Bishop? Are you with us yet?
I am. Yes, I'm all set up. Thank you to city staff.
All right.
Um, so I guess we're doing correspondence. I had one follow-up from an individual about the throat width issue that we heard about last week, and that's the only one in the last two weeks now.
All right, fantastic. So that moves us to the questions and public comment. Uh, there is no public hearing tonight, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting or has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. All right, do we have anybody for a public comment today? Let's go ahead. And also hit that green button when you start on the microphone. Or make that, hit the button and it'll turn green.
Gotcha. Oh, it's green. Thank you. My name is Nikki Engler. I live at 207 Crestview Lane. And I'm coming here to talk about Sandy Beach after an experience that I had recently. I wanna start out by saying that it's amazing to not have the boat launch right there where it used to be. And having it at the end is super fantastic for the travel and the added parking. And that seemed to be like really contentious for everybody in the city because I didn't really understand what was going on. But that flow, from my experience, was great. So, there's that. Also, the rest of the experience that I had, we had, it was last week, Sunday. We had rented the large shelter for a party. We had many people. There were far more over 50 people there. I don't know the exact count. Um, my first issue is that I expected to pay for all of their entries because they were a family from out of town. Only one aunt told me that she paid before I had gotten there. Nobody else paid. So I find that to be a problem because at the hut, the entry hut, hut, someone should be taking payment or checking all of our city cards. Nobody checked my card, but I mean, it's no biggie. I am from here. But I mean, the reality is there was several dollars, I'm saying, that were missed from the city. Also, when we were there, there were another group, it was, took up a great deal of grass space between the large shelter and the beach in that area there, um, who took up shop basically the entire time and, which is fine, whatever. However, they made it their home. The extraordinarily loud music, the way that they handled themselves, um, their physical presence. Also, they intruded on our space that we had rented and reserved once in advance, I'd like to point out, but, um, they used the grill area there. I asked them, you know, "What's up? Can I help you with something?" Um, just being cordial. And it wasn't a very good interaction in the beginning, and then I got firm. And that's the way that I remained the entire time that I spoke with them, was firmly. Um, I ended up, after they finished cooking what they cooked, I reminded them again that they needed to leave because they were pushing out my guests from under the shelter. They did leave. They moved themselves and all of their stuff that they had to another grill setup in farther while leaving the coals in the mound of coals in the grill area in the shelter that I had reserved with flames. I was really frustrated, came back and addressed it more aggressively. They poured two bottles of water on it and then walked away while mocking me the entire time. No big deal. I can handle that stuff because I had 50-ish or more people there to back me up if something did go wrong. They went and took their place back. I decided, okay, I needed to go find PD because I saw their car sitting somewhere. I walked up and down. I did not see anybody from the police department. That doesn't mean they weren't there. I just didn't see them. So I went then to the traffic or the entry hut. There's like a 15-year-old kid or something there. What is he going to do any differently than me? Right? I talked to him. I asked him, whose responsibility is that going to be if A, somebody gets hurt, or B, I rented it? Am I gonna be held responsible for cleaning up that mess when we didn't even use it? He had no answers. I don't blame him. I'm just saying he had no answers. Another older gentleman was there who did have some more experience. He did come and talk to me about this. In discussing it with people around the community, apparently there is a standing order from the city council. This is what I've told, not what I know. I've been told that the City Council of Lake Mills has instructed the police department to stand down on these matters, to not engage with the community who is coming and taking over our public beaches. I find that to be repulsive as somebody who lives in this community and who expects my children to at the very basic uphold the law and to not be, um, you know, just rude to our public spaces, for lack of better words. Um, if there is a problem happening in our beaches and we know about it, and now here it is, the end of August, and we've not dealt with it as a city, where is that breakdown in communication or that breakdown in leadership? Something needs to happen. If a 15-year-old sitting at the traffic hut is the one who's gonna be holding the authority with what happens at the beach, what resources are you providing him with to actually make decisions at the beach? What if something happens? What if I was there without 50 of my closest friends and family who would get my back that day? And what if those five or six larger-than-me men decided they were gonna take issue with me and I just had my five children? What then? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't have very good cell service down there because of where it is. There's a number of problems that I see arising from there. However, I am very concerned that this, I don't know how old he was, actually. I can't say. I'm just, he looked young. So I'm guessing 15. I don't know how old he was. Um, I just wonder, is that the best choice? Is there some other way that we can handle this? And I hope that I get some response from you guys, even though you're not supposed to. I would, I'd love to understand what actually, you know, is your expectation for Sandy Beach? Thank you.
Is there any questions?
I'm sorry.
You said you were looking for PD. Did you actually call the PD for Lake Mills?
No, I didn't. That's true. I could have actually called. And I don't know why. Maybe it's because I had stumbled upon, or not stumbled, but then I went to the traffic hut and then spoke with them, but you are absolutely correct. I did not actually end up dialing them.
And actually, from my experience on the council, there is no stand-down order. If you'd have called, they would have came and helped you out.
And I don't actually doubt that. I saw Police Department earlier in the day, because we were there the entire day, um, come and speak with that group, um, from another person had had a complaint about the level of sound. It was fine when it was just loud, but when it reached like, I can play it and downtown can hear it loud, like, you know. But then at that point, there was PD there. So I do know that they were there, like I said, and their car was still there. I just did not physically see them. When I walked up and down, they could have been anywhere. I just didn't see them in my, like, quick walking. I am not saying this to blame the PD. So I wanna make sure that that's clear. It was just like one of those, holy crap, what just happened sort of a situations. Okay. Anything else?
All right. Sorry about your experience and hopefully next time it'll be better.
No worries. I just hope that our Lake Mills beaches, even though they're open to the public, that they're not being, um, disrespected by people who are not from our community, especially from the first place, they're not being charged, right? Because that's kind of the thing is that they should be, we should get the money coming in for our beaches. But then it may be something to look at, like our, you know, we've had this repeated conversation about the town of Lake Mills versus the city of Lake Mills, but these people are not from the general area of Lake Mills. They are from outside of Lake Mills' general area. So I just see this as being something that we should take seriously as a city and actually, like, figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comment? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the city manager report. Steve?
You've been provided with the June, uh, check registers and the July police report, and that's all I have at tonight. Are there any questions on that? All right, thank you.
Catherine, go ahead.
Sorry, I was slow on the uptake. Um, I actually don't see Ms. Millbath, and I had sent her an email previously, but maybe Steve, you can help answer. I saw a couple of dispersments to the Rotary Club. I was wondering what those were. And then, um, also $5,700 for Cream City Marketing. I just hadn't seen any marketing come through lately that we were aware of, so I didn't know maybe what that was for.
The Rotary was mine and mixed memberships. Um, and the Cream City was from work that they'd done about a year and a half ago with the previous council. It wasn't finished, uh, and so they were holding the bill and they finally decided to bill us last month, and so we paid that. Uh, if they, we want, they'll come back and finish it up, but, um, they had put a lot of work into it. And so they wanted, they waited quite a while, so they finally built.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Any other questions?
Um, I'm just, are we allowed to ask, under this item, are we allowed to ask the city manager a question regarding the public comment that we received?
We, we really don't wanna delve into that too far unless you wanna put it on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
That's right. That's right. Thanks.
Okay. All right, moving to item eight. Uh, this is the Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of the Public Works Board from July 13th, 2021. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, I'll move to accept those minutes. We'll move on to council business. Item A is an appointment that I'm making to the Plan Commission for Mike, Michael Foster. Uh, he was a prior council member, a lot of good experiences. Uh, reached out recently that he had an interest in that opening, and I'm making that appointment. So if I can get somebody to make a motion to that effect in a second, we'll take a vote.
Now I move to elect, um, Mike Foster to play a commission.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Ms. Quidnow and a second by Ms. Curler. Any comment? Can we move to a roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, item B. Thank you, by the way. Item B, motion 21-8-2-1. Misty, can you read that?
City Council motion 21-8-2-1, approval of 2022 street maintenance program.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve motion 21-2-8-1 regarding the 2022 street maintenance program.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Let's move. Let's move to a discussion. Is there some background on that?
Well, first, let's start by saying this is a preliminary one that's passed by the Public Works Board, uh, basically to create a 22 budget. You'll see this come up again in March when we actually do the final to go to bid. And what we do at that time is we evaluate what actually occurred over the winter. And so the actual program might change a little bit, but we have an idea, you know, what money is needed, how much money we have, and then what streets are in the worst condition. But this is the preliminary. This is generally what we think based on today would work best in next year's maintenance program and to give us budget numbers. The rest of the information is Duane, so I'll let him talk now.
Thanks, Steve. Actually, most of this you've already seen last month as part of the capital improvement plan. Uh, what we did do, uh, we added two maps to show you the locations that were intended. Uh, the first map shows two streets, Cook Street and Brown's Court. Uh, those are important because they're in the seven-year cycle. Uh, it has been seven years since those were reconstructed, so it is proposed to have chip seal in those two areas. Uh, the second map is in the Brookstone area. Again, about seven years ago, they were in a chip seal rotation. Uh, we are now coming back up to that seven-year time period. Uh, in general, they're all deteriorating about at the same level. Uh, we are seeing a little bit more deterioration on, uh, Brookstone Drive. Uh, obviously, there's more traffic on that street. Uh, so we are looking at potentially seeing that that will be a mill and overlay for one, two, or three blocks long in '22. Again, as Steve mentioned, we will reevaluate after the winter thaw, winter freeze-thaw cycles, which do damage to the streets as the water freezes and thaws in the cracks. Um, any questions? Uh, before I go on, the last thing I would say is these are the only streets that are between four and 10 rating that have not been touched in the last seven years. Um, it is a lower list, lower value. Uh, you will see some lumpiness in the coming years, but for this year, uh, that current price is estimated at about $150,000 for the list as it stands. If more deterioration would occur, there is a potential that more mill and overlay would be required in the Brookstone area. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Um, I know you said you will go back into spring then to reevaluate. Do you just reevaluate this list or do you possibly look at other streets in this city that maybe weren't on this list, but you were aware had some more damage?
Yeah, great question. Actually, the DOT does require that we do our Whistler rating program for the entire city by the middle of December of this year. Um, so we will have a reevaluation of the entire city before that time. Gives us a good idea if anything is deteriorating faster than expected. Um, so yes, uh, we will be looking at that not only before December, but then that'll give us some ideas of places to go look, uh, next spring. It also helps the street crew will let me know if they're seeing deterioration throughout the winter as well. And we always look to have their input on what they're seeing out in the, out in the streets.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Um, there's a pretty large difference between the chip seal and even the medium option, the low-cost asphalt. Um, I can't do the quick math, but it looks like about $400, $10,000 difference. So the chip seal option was chosen because it was highlighted for most of these streets. Is that gonna keep us within the seven-year, um, reevaluation cycle? Or is that gonna make us have to look at these streets again sooner because we chose the lower option?
So the general plan is to start with a reconstruct. Seven years later, evaluate, uh, typically in that first round, it will be a chip seal. Uh, typically, seven years later, it probably will be a chip seal again. Uh, but again, different factors will impact that and we'll evaluate. The third round, typically, we're getting to the point where we're going to see probably a mill and overlay. And so the difference between the chip seal price and the reason we do the maintenance, the chip seal price is about $2 a square yard. The mill and overlay price is upwards of 20. And a full pulverization and reconstruct of, pulverization and overlay is about 40 versus a total reconstruct, which is in the hundreds of dollars per square yard. So you can see the maintenance program is very cost-effective, especially on the chip seal side. If we can maintain that before we even get to a mill and overlay for the first 20 years, um, it's very cost-effective to be doing the chip seal program. So where we can, we're gonna continue to do the chip seals. Once that deterioration is occurring, that the chip seal, you'll see actually as the, as the street department continues to do crack filling in preparation of chip seal, some of the streets start to become very littered with crack fill. That'll give us an indication that probably the next time around, we're looking at a mill and overlay. Um, if there's only a few cracks and that chip seal is gonna keep that water from freezing and, freezing in those cracks and creating deterioration, we will continue to use chip seal where we can. The cycle just continues. Then, once you do the mill and overlay, that's gonna bring that level back up, get rid of those cracks again. Uh, the next seven-year cycle will probably go back to a chip seal. Again, reevaluate, and as, as time goes on, as you get to that 60-year period or 80-year period, we're probably looking at a reconstruct again. So the goal is to extend that as far as possible.
Thank you.
Used to be that, um, most of my career, the, the, uh, reconstruct was done every 30 years. Ranged from 25 to 35, but most of it was based on 30 years. We went to, in 2014, we ramped to a different program, which was designed to do it every 63 years. So, but we do a lot more oil and chip. So if you stay on that seven-year cycle with the oil and chip, you can really extend the life of a good street. The other issue is you have to have stormwater drainage. And Lake, Lake Mills often believed in evaculant evaporation. So they didn't put in any storm sewer. So most of our streets, such as Prospect and Moss, have no storm sewer. And they're flat as a board, and so doing oil and chip and overlays is almost a total waste of money. That was what happened with Mulberry. We were every 12 to 13, you know, 12 to 15 years, we were having to overlay Mulberry because there was no stormwater drainage. We're hoping that we fix that with this one. We put in stormwater drainage to fix those other areas. Uh, once we get those rebuilt, then they'll fall into this cycle. And being able to be on a 63-year cycle allows us to catch up on a lot of our maintenance problems.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none. I'll call for roll call on motion 21-8-2-1.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item C. Discussion decision on request for Tyrena Ladies Club to use the community center for fundraiser. On motion 21-8-2-2, Misty, did I just read all that or do you have more to add?
I'll read the title. Just for formality. City Council motion 21-8-2-2, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Tyrena Ladies Club.
All right, can I have the motion?
Motion to approve motion 21-8-2-2, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community. I'm sorry, I make a motion to approve. Did I say that? Um, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Tyrena Ladies Club.
I'll second. All right, motion by Mrs. Bishop and a second by Mr. Fields. Can we get some background on this?
There is a policy that was put in place about use of the community center that was done in '99 when the building was built. And it divides the users up into certain classifications, and then there are certain uses that are specialized. So in this case, the Tyrena Ladies Club is a Class B user, and they would be able to use it just by calling in and asking without being charged. But because they're doing a fundraiser, uh, it requires that that be approved by the council. So, um, this is on the agenda for you to approve their fundraiser for a Tyrena Ladies Club project. Anything you wanna add, Misty?
No, that covers it. Unless there's any questions.
Is there any questions? God bless you, by the way. Yes.
Uh, just wondering, Steve, can you just tell us a little bit of the background behind having fundraising uses? Get the scrutiny of the council?
Historically, there have been a lot of activities that go in under fundraisers that tend to give the city a bad name. And so cities have historically wanted the council to review who's raising money, why, and what it's being used for and those types of things. So it, it's more of a, don't put the staff in a position to have people criticizing what that fundraiser was for. If the council looks at it and says it's good, then we're off. This, this was a little bit crafted. I know Verne got the original one from McFarland and used that one. We have made no changes to it in the last 22 years. Probably could use a looking at, but that's kind of the background and it's functioned.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, for the city manager- Yes, for the city manager, this looks to be a complete application. It looks to be timely. It looks like the appropriate fee was paid, assuming this is within their first or second use. Given all of that, though, I don't have any concept of what the event is, what the fundraiser is, to really make a decision if this is a fundraiser the city wants to do. I see fashion show, but is there any more detail that could be given?
The Tyrena Ladies Club is a local organization that raises money and donates it to like scholarships or special events that benefit the public in Lake Mills area. So historically, they don't give us the exact thing that they're going to give it for. Usually, they raise money and then they kind of spend it out over the course of the year, kind of like Rotary Club. So it's, we usually don't get that exact one. But the Tyrenia Ladies Club has a pretty good reputation in the city of Lake Mills, so we haven't had any problem.
I wasn't trying to pass comment on anybody's reputation, but so and again, as to even what they're fundraising money for, I don't know that that is necessarily for us to pass judgment on as the council, just so much as the description of the events. I see an amount of people, but is it, you know, are they taking in money by tickets, selling those? Are they selling the clothes? Are they selling alcohol? I don't think they are because they did have an alcohol waiver and absent a license, you know, they're probably just serving, not selling. But I can't really tell that from the application. So again, those are just my questions. And maybe moving forward, we just get a little more detail in the application process. But I did say this does look complete based on what our current processes are.
Ms. Bishop, it does look like at the bottom of the last page that they submitted the alcohol deposit fees. So to me, that indicates that they intend on serving alcohol. Is that correct?
Yeah. Go ahead, Misty.
Because it's a fundraiser, there's money being exchanged. So no matter what, there's an implied sale from our view. Therefore, it does require a license that does not go through city council. That's done administratively. They have submitted that as well. They are a user that's not charged for the room use, but we do require an alcohol deposit whenever there's alcohol being served or sold, depending on the event, just because of the potential for damage. As long as they're cleared after the event, they get that deposit back. So it's purely a deposit for the alcohol and they will have a license for this event because there is money exchanged. It's an automatic considered a sale.
And that's statutory, right?
Yes, that's how we would do it with any. There's implied sale whenever you can't, you can't put on an event and say, I'm going to charge you, let's say it's dinner, it's $50 for a ticket, it's automatically you get food and we're going to give you free beer. Because there's money exchanged, it's considered a sale.
Thank you, Ms. Quest.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll call for a roll call on motion 21-8-2-2.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
All right. Thank you. So move on to item D on the agenda, which is motion 21-8-2-3. Misty, can you read that?
City Council motion 21-8-2-3, accepting the donation from Lake Mills Rotary Club of playground equipment for use at Bartles Beach.
All right. Can I have a motion?
I move to accept the motion 21-8-2-3 with the donation from Lake Mills Rotary Club of playground equipment for use at Bartles Beach.
I'll second that.
All right. A motion by Ms. Quidno and a second by Ms. Curler. Can we get some background on this one?
Well, it's typical donation, so it goes through the donation process. Grounds and Facilities Director has provided a memo on the background and some of the issues. It's essentially a $50,000 donation to the city. That does have a greater cost than that because there's about another $82,000 that will be assumed by the city if we build a specific type of handicapped accessible playground. We don't have to do that. And that's probably an argument that we'll have, a debate that we'll have during the budget process. But Eric is here, so if you want to step to the podium and say anything or answer any questions, you're up.
Do you have any specific questions besides anything that was in the memo or anything you want me to focus on?
Were you intending to use the playground equipment at the recycled equipment at another park?
I'm not able to recycle all of the equipment because they no longer pass safety inspections. However, the stuff that does pass safety inspections, I will be repurposing to another park. That includes kind of that Curly Q Jungle Gym type thing and then the swing set. So those are the only two structures that would currently pass safety inspections. Unfortunately, the Cool Mary Go Around, that's old school, has to go.
Can you go into a little bit of the background about this donation, where it's coming from, why it's being made, that type of thing?
This was started prior to my position, so maybe Mick with Rotary would be able to help out a little bit more on my background if I need some clarification. But this goes back initially started with, correct me if I'm wrong, with Dean Sanders' family, starting a preliminary donation, kind of in his remembrance or honor for some playground equipment in the city. From there, it escalated with Rotary getting involved for donation, Lake Mills Market, Lake Mills Community Foundation as well. And from there, the funds escalated into the point of doing a full playground structure.
Eric, could you tell us about the timeline for installation? I know there's some deadline on purchasing the equipment for the Rotary to get the discount, but when would you plan on doing or having them do the installation?
More than likely April 2022. Now, we do have to purchase it sooner than that because the price that's been quoted by Burke, the contractor for the playground equipment, that is only valid until the end of this month. That was secured months ago through Rotary's request to, you know, get a quote for the equipment. So we are kind of at a time-constraining thing there with the actual price of the equipment, but installation would be planned for spring 2022.
Thank you.
It has to be purchased prior to that, but yeah.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to allow representatives from the Rotary to speak and tell us more about the project from their perspective.
I second. Boom. You got, she's got it.
All right. So motion by Mrs. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Quick hand raise, all in favor? Okay. Go ahead, Mick.
Good evening and thank you. So last year, when Dean Sanders passed away, he was one of our Rotarians. He's a former president and obviously he made a huge impact on this community as superintendent of the school district. He was vital in the upgrades to all the schools and he, you know, he loved kids dearly. He loved sports. And when he passed away, a lot of people left money in remembrance to the Rotary Club in his, in his honor. We started out with about $5,000 and we met with Jeff to discuss, you know, a possible playground donation of a single item, you know, for $5,000. And with Jeff's enthusiasm and Pam's enthusiasm and stuff like that, you know, Pam being a family friend and mentor, you know, with Dean and it quickly grew. And as, as we got the word out there, there were a lot of people that stepped forward. There were individual donations of, you know, $1,000 at a crack. Lake Mills Community Foundation jumped in with $10,000. Lake Mills Market was $7,000. And we also got a grant through Rotary for another five. And it just continued to roll. And so as it went, we were able to get more and more playground equipment. So we've secured the quote from Jeff. You guys, I believe, have a picture of the playground that is, is what we'd want to use. We did file the paperwork with the city for the donation exception. We did go through the Parks Department process so that the Parks Board got a chance to review it. And I believe they've pushed it up to you guys. And we believe in Rotary that this will be, you know, an amazing thing for the community. A lot of those things are, one, as Eric pointed out, have a better safety record for children's use. I think there's a little bit more equipment that comes with this and I think we're hitting the target age range for that area, too. I do want to make it clear that the Rotary donation is just of the equipment. The port in place is something that Eric will have to deal with through his budget and something that you guys will have to discuss is the equipment does not need that stuff to be installed. So whichever way you guys go, if you choose the port in place or you choose the chips, it does not affect the fact that the playground will go in at some point. It's just its accessibility out to the community and that'll be a discussion you guys have to have. But, you know, as Rotarians, our motto is service above self and Dean embodied that and as a club, we wanted to recognize him. And once the playground is installed, we intend to have a sign and memorial to him there. So any specific questions I can answer?
Any questions for the Rotary? Yes, Ms. Bishop?
Chief Selg, thanks for being here and the rest of the Rotary members. I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for the Grounds and Facilities Director, but I understand if we don't accept this today, then the quote for the current price we have, the $47,000 expires and then there may be additional costs of $12,000 to $14,000. What is that additional cost? And, you know, I'm just wondering like why the price goes up so much.
Sure. So there was a sale at the time. So Jeff Thompson is the salesman. He, he's a member of our community, lives here in town. His wife, Amanda Thompson, is fairly well-known as the former principal at the elementary school. And he was able to secure a sale price for us and it actually had expired at the end of July. He was able to call, I believe, the owner of the company and get permission to extend that price to September for us because he was familiar with the timeline we were working under with the meeting schedule for you guys. So felt that that was a safe deadline to go after, but I think his boss set a sunset on that and that will end. I believe the difference was 12%. So that's another $6,000, $7,000. I also believe the way he stated it, we might actually have to start to look at some different equipment. So if that happens, I presume that we would have to get a new rendering and start over again with the Parks Board so that they could take a look at that and be happy with the equipment as shown. So that's kind of how our timeline ended up where it is.
Yes.
So I just want to clarify that we are approving of the donation of this park equipment to be put in at Bartles Beach. And that's pretty much what we are deciding upon right now. The floor, the ground or whatever, that's going to be something that we'll have to work on later. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes, the port in place will be a city budget discussion you'll have to have later that, as I believe Eric has submitted already through his budget as director of the Parks and Facilities. And that will be discussion for later. But our donation and the equipment is not reliant upon or contingent upon your choice whether to accept his recommendation or to not to.
So I'm hearing that the equipment does work and can be used as intended if we cannot later find this other piece. It sounds like it's just the flooring, the tire material?
Yes, and I believe that's a discussion for another day with the budget. Eric does have some samples that he'll be able to show you all and pass around and maybe Jeff will be here to describe that in greater detail. I know that it does increase some handicap capabilities to that playground, which I believe we do not have in any other park in our community. There's also some maintenance issues it saves money on. I think there's some easier cleanup, but that's all for him to discuss at a later time. Rotary, I just want to be clear, Rotary, this is Rotary's donation is the equipment and the rest of that has to come through Eric.
Yes.
I have maybe a question while somebody from the Rotary Club is standing here. But again, maybe Grounds and Facilities. If we put this equipment in and let's say there's maintenance required or other things that need to be put in or replaced, does this company have a monopoly on this type of equipment or can we plug and play with other companies and other products to get later down the road, the best deal when the city is spending the city's money?
So I would probably have to defer that to Jeff from the company, but a lot of these equipment, if you look at the diagram, are kind of a standalone kind of thing. So if you buy a different piece to put in a different part or remove something and put it in, as far as like adding on to that structure through a different company, that I don't know, but I think that's the, that's the chance you take with any piece of park equipment you put in any park at any time. So I'm not an expert, I'm sorry, but if Eric wants to address that or if I was accurate.
Thank you, Chief.
I will comment that at the Parks Board meeting, it was discussed about the longevity of the company that was being discussed, the equipment being discussed, putting in there has a longevity in the business, whereas the mistake was made having to do with Wallace Park, that that particular company is no longer in business. And so having to do any kind of replacement of the equipment at Wallace Park is much more difficult and because the company's no longer a business. But the, the equipment that the Rotary Club wants to donate is from a manufacturer that has been in business for quite some time.
I believe Jeff said 100 years. Was that about accurate?
Yeah. I thought quite some time would be good enough, but 100 years works. Thank you.
Any other questions? About staff, any questions?
I have a follow-up for Eric. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, ma'am.
Eric, just wondering if you know what is the lifespan, projected lifespan of the equipment from this company? How long would you expect it to last with normal use?
Approximately 20 years. Now, it's, that's with routine maintenance. I mean, we see Wallace Park already, it's around 10 years old. There's already routine maintenance that needs to go into it to keep it up, you know, upcap and up the safety precautions. So there is always going to be costs associated with that. Now, I'm talking about actual replacement of this equipment, probably 20 years, if not a little bit more. More than, I would say more than likely more after 20 years.
Any other questions? All right. Seems like a great discussion, but let's move on for a vote here.
Oh, yeah. I was going to say if you want me to speak a little bit about what's currently there. I mean, I actually played on the equipment that was at Bartles Beach when I was a kid. I know a lot of people who are quite a bit older than me have probably played on the equipment at Bartles Beach. So it's Bartles Beach would be my number two as far as immediate need of replacement for equipment. Now, from what I understand, it was picked with Rob Getz and a couple of the representatives from Rotary, that Bartles would be the pick for it because of the amount of actual visitation that Bartles Beach uses. It would be the most bang for the buck, basically. It doesn't currently have adequate access for people who are currently on it as far as, you know, the amount of people that actually use the playground equipment there. My number one pick would be Memorial Park. Now, just based on the actual people who are using it and the amount of users at the park, Bartles Beach was determined to be the most adequate pick for this equipment.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, roll call for motion 21-8-2-3.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Great. Thank you. I think the donation from the Rotary Club is fantastic. It's a great, great memory for Mr. Sanders, Dean Sanders. He's played an important role in the community and, and of course, he affected a lot of children over the years and this is a good way to give back to the, to the children of Lake Mills. So thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you, everyone. Let us know when it- Thank you, everyone. Let us know when it's being dedicated, please. Just a, a point I brought up at a prior meeting when we had donations, I just want to reiterate, I, I'm not sure if we have a process for thanking the donors when we receive a gift. So, I'd be curious if we can either come up with a process or make sure that we have, you know, do have some way of either coming from a letter from the council president or whatever it might be. I think especially something this sizable that's going to last this long deserves, you know, a thank you note.
I unofficially second that. Because it's not a motion, so it's, I can't second, but I unofficially second that.
I'll take that up with city staff and we'll figure out appropriate measures.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, item E, resolution 21-52. Misty, can you read that?
City of Lake Mills Resolution 21-52, reduction of financial guarantee, Tyrena Point subdivision.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution 21-52.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quidno. Is there a discussion on Tyrena Point?
I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
The question is, was microphone work?
Different device, so yeah.
All right.
Running off of the phone this evening. Corey O'Donnell is the representative for Loose Homes. He is on, or Grimmer is the developer. He is on the line if you guys would like to talk to him at all about the progress of the project. What we're looking at here is a Phase One completion, essentially. It went, the final reduction of the escrowed funds occurred last August 18th. So, we're right up against the one-year warranty period. To my knowledge and based on the correspondence that you've received from the, the engineer from Strand, the Phase One development projects are in good working order and ready for basically a release of that warranty period and a return of the 10% of the funds that we maintain. The Phase Two developments, this is the second reduction of the escrowed funds, and we are maintaining more than two times the amount of the required improvements, the estimated cost of the amount of the required improvements to complete Phase Two. It is in line with ordinance. They've reached a level where a second reduction is appropriate. The city feels satisfied in that we are maintaining adequate funds. The working relationship with the developer itself is moving forward and they definitely are incentivized to complete Phase Two and hopefully move on further along in the project. That's basically the Cliff Notes. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Or I'm certain that Mr. O'Donnell would be happy to as well.
So, any questions?
I just have a process question on the warranty, the one-year warranty. If the council wouldn't take an action after the one-year passes, is it automatically closed out then?
Well, because we still have, I want to make sure I understand your question. The one-year warranty period is the one-year warranty period. Once that's up, we no longer have a warranty under our contract and under our ordinance that requires it. We do still maintain funds right now, which is required to enter that period. Once those are returned, there really is no more recompense. There's nothing that we can really go after if there were a defect that were discovered in design or something like that down the road potentially. But that one-year warranty really does kind of hinder our, our ability to attack an issue that we find in, in what has been accepted, specifically Phase One in this circumstance.
Essentially, he should say is, is that, yes, we don't have any legal right to hang on to that money.
And that's, I think that was more what I was getting at was, we have to release the funds if that one-year warranty period would end and for some reason the council hadn't acted.
That's, that's accurate. There is requirements with regard to confirming that all of the necessary development projects that were considered in the escrowed funds and the financial guarantee were completed. But we've gone through that process with the engineer. So, yeah, we're, we're basically there.
So, any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's move into a roll call for resolution 21-52.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. That takes us out of council business. Is there any recommendations for future agenda items? All right, seeing none, I'll move into item number 11, which is to convene into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85. I need a motion to move into closed session?
I move to go into closed session pursuant to the statute.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Curler. Can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, and we will go offline and when we reconvene, we won't come back online tonight. We'll just go into an adjournment. So, at this point, we'll go offline. Thank you.